Thanks for joining us this afternoon. We take you live to Parliament. And we know that the Committee takes to consider the Proper Human Sexual Rights and Family Values Bill. That's the Constitutional and Legal Affairs Committee of Parliament. They began public hearings today, and a number of petitions have been received already. We know that over 100 memos were received by the Committee, and they've started hearing from the individuals and institutions that put forward these proposals for and against the bill. We've been hearing from the Pentecost Church, Amnesty International, the Ghana Pentecostal and Charismatic Council, among others. They took their turn to advance their argument for or against the bill. Leader and member of the concerned Ghanaian citizens, lawyer Akutwampa, was a first to present his arguments against the bill, insisting that the passage of the bill will violate fundamental human rights in the Constitution. He further challenged the claim that the activities of homosexuals threaten the survival of human existence. Shortly after that, the Ghana Pentecostal and Charismatic Council also argued in favor of the bill. Apostle Ophori Kruga, who spoke on behalf of the Council, observed that the bill, if passed into law, will safeguard the Ghanaian family value and urged the Committee to recommend the passage of the bill. We'll be hearing from all of them shortly. But let me take you live to Parliament now, where my colleague, Kusipaka Wilson, is with us. The Committee just finished day one of the public hearing. Paka, how would you describe it?
All right, so MFA, it's been quite interesting today. And the Committee has gone for just about 40-minute break. And upon their return, we do understand that the Ghana AIDS Commission and the Amnesty International will also take their turn. But as you can see, I have with me Professor Tichomenu here. She's been kicking against the passage of the bill. And today, of course, she made her standpoint, she articulated her standpoint clearly to the Committee members, and even indicated that the activities of homosexual, particularly lesbians and gays, does not threaten the human existence or survival of the human existence. She said with me, a quick one. Prof, when you were speaking, you mentioned something that I need some quick clarity on. You say that lesbians can have children, gays can have children. Many Ghanas want to know, how is this possible? Because they say, I mean, the biological nature of human, it is a man and a woman who can have children.
Thank you very much. Yes, so we've had an interesting day. And one of the things that we have tried to get across is that this bill confuses sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and sexual characteristics. Okay, a lesbian is a woman. If she chooses to have children, she can have children. Physically, yes, she can decide that she wants children. She can get inseminated. There are all kinds of ways. Transgender people, some of them are women, they can have children. So I think that this focus on procreation, as if people come into the world just to have children, is incorrect. We have tried to say that it's a choice what people want to do. And we have also shown that there has been no diminution in the population of Ghana, despite the 276,000 gays and lesbians who live in this country.
276,000?
Thousand, yes.
Gays and lesbians who live in Ghana?
Yes, so they are not being imported from somewhere, you know? I think in the debate...
These are Ghanaians, I mean.
Yes, they are Ghanaians.
Foreign nationals?
No, they are not foreign nationals. This is, these are statistics from the Ghana AIDS Commission. I'm not importing them, you know? So I think first of all that we need an evidential base for many of the things that are being proposed. A lot of the time, we're getting analogies from what is happening in the U.S., what is happening before the U.S. Congress. And one of our criticisms of this bill is that there is very little research, Ghanaian research, that tells us. And what little research there is distorts the figures. So the 18.1% of men who have sex with men who are HIV positive is being bandied around the place. When in fact, if you look at the population, if you look at statistics from the Ghana AIDS Commission, you can go and do it, check, do Ghana fact-check. 5.4% of the total HIV-prevalent population are gay. And the majority of people who have HIV in Ghana are women and heterosexual people. So again, you know, we are just being led down the line, you know? There is, I think, one of the proponents claimed that eight out of 10, what led to the fact-check, eight out of 10 HIV-positive people were gay or bisexual. And it's simply not true. And when it was put to him, he says, oh, this is a fragment of the LGBTI community. When indeed, they spoke to, is it Dr. Yisieado of the Ghana AIDS Commission? So I think we should have a proper debate and education about some of these things, you know? I think that right now, people are just being scared. There's a bogeyman. They are coming for your children. They are doing this.
Talking about coming for your children. I mean, the Church of Pentecost presented about seven memos, I mean, from the various things of the Church. And children, I mean, they talked about children.
I don't know how their children...
And they say you're a mother. And they expect that, I mean, you should listen to the kids. How do you respond to that?
But did the children read the bill? Has it been written for them? When we look at the facts in this country, okay? When we look at the statistics from the criminal CID on child offenses, the wide majority of it is committed by heterosexual people. So we need to distinguish pedophilia, which is an offense, from the identity of being gay or lesbian, okay? And by all means, let us protect our children. Let us protect our children from all the broadcasting, from all the adverts, from all the pornographic sites, okay? But let's not whip it up into some hysteria against gays and lesbians. So we have to be careful. It's not like anybody is saying, you know, let anybody loose. We should enforce our laws. If gays and lesbians commit crimes against children, they should be punished. But we are saying that, from what we know, from the data and statistics available, the vast majority of offenders are heterosexual people, some of whom are married.
Right, now finally for me. You presented the argument here. Are you convinced that the Committee members were convinced by your argument and that probably, as you wish, this bill will be rejected?
Well, we did not, you see. We presented our arguments based on the Constitution, based on the fact that the lawmaking power is vested in Parliament, but it has to be exercised in conformity with the Constitution. And our reading of the bill and the exposition that we did showed that the bill violates all the human rights clauses in the Constitution. It has its own exaggerated and untested notions of Ghanaian family values. It has taken things from the directive principles of state policy. And as we were reminded, this is not a bill of Parliament. This is a private members' bill. So to have six people who now go and define for us what are Ghanaian family values and those things, and oblige everybody, shareholders, teachers, judges, where is this coming from? What is the mischief? What is the mischief? So we have not been convinced. And we do hope, we are encouraged by the posture of the Committee. They asked us questions. We responded to the questions. And we believe we've had a fair hearing. And we will be looking forward and monitoring the rest of the hearings. And we are positive that, in light of Ghana's Constitution, in light of all the Ghana's obligations that it has voluntarily taken, that this bill will not be passed.
MFA, that's Professor Tichomenu there. She's very confident that, I mean, the argument advanced by her team would obviously ensure that this bill is rejected when it's before Parliament. Of course, she says that they've had a fair hearing, which of course I can attest to it. Many of them advanced their argument, the Committee members, asked questions, and of course, they were given the opportunity to respond to the questions. MP, Honorable James Sagaga is here. Honorable, you have monitored the activities for today, I mean, the first half of the day. What are your general impressions there?
Well, I think so far, so good. The Committee set its agenda for the day. And the number of speakers, or if you like, authors of memos who were listed to speak have been given the right to speak. Members also had an opportunity to ask all the questions they deemed fit, and responses were given.
You were asked a very interesting question about data and facts as to how activities of homosexuals does not threaten procreation. How are you satisfied with the answer you got?
Well, I would leave that for the Committee's determination. I don't want to preempt anything. For now, we are listening to the presenters of the various memoranda with an open mind. Our duty is to ask all the questions we deem fit in order to assist us arrive at conclusions that are supported by facts, evidence, and the law. The Constitution is supreme. And so we're going to respect, you know, the laws and the evidence that is before us in reaching recommendations for the plenary to consider. So I do not think it's appropriate for me to make, you know, prejudicial comments at this point whether questions I asked were responded to very well or not. I did ask a question on procreation. And the point I sought to drive home was whether you needed evidence beyond the fact that same-sex, man-to-man, woman-to-woman cannot bring forth another human. And that is what I regard as procreation. Of course, some responses were given. Whether the responses were apt or not...
As far as the decision would be taken in that regard.
And then the bill would be subjected to the constitutional test and appropriate recommendations made.
You've gone for a bit for 40 minutes. I'm sure very soon the Committee will return. Who is in line to make his argument before the Committee?
Yes, I think Professor Bob King is due to speak, and some others. So we're going to be hearing, you know, some of the presenters like we did in the first segment. When we come back from lunch.
But for you, generally, you are enthused about how at the event...
Yes, that is how things are supposed to be done. I mean, the procedure that is built out in the standing orders and even the Constitution on the work of Committees. This is the time for the general public to be heard. They've already submitted memoranda, but they are normally given the opportunity to go through the memoranda once again. And if members have questions to ask in order to clarify a certain key or civilian points that members do not understand, the opportunity is given for those questions to be asked. At the end of the day, the Committee takes a decision and makes recommendations to the plenary for its consideration. So I must say, so far, the proceedings have gone on well, except that from the beginning, we had challenges with the sitting arrangement. And so I think that tomorrow, something needs to be done about that. This is not a Committee room. So members, you know, would have to always turn back and strain themselves in order to talk and/or make eye contact with the audience in this room. That is not proper. I mean, the world over Committee rooms have a special design.
Round table as Mahama Yaga was...
That's right, that's right. So we hope that tomorrow, the clerk will take steps to correct this.
Right, so, Honorable, final for me. Before you go, we know that you received almost about 150 memos. How many days are you expecting to engage the secret as well?
So our view is that some of the memos definitely would have to be consolidated. Those that are virtually speaking to the same issues ought to be consolidated. Otherwise, we're going to have people repeat themselves. I mean, what others have already thrown light on, they would come back and repeat the same things because they have submitted a memo. So maybe after today's sitting, the Committee would have to re-engage or reconvene and have an in-house meeting to determine whether or not it wouldn't be appropriate to consolidate some of the memos. That's the way to...
So so far, you've not said unless it's two weeks or three weeks to be, I mean, to finish with this.
I think that if we manage our time well, we should be able to conclude with the hearings much, much earlier than the time given us to do this work.
So from here, when you're done with this consultation or engagement, what will be the next line of action? What are the processes that you go through in fairness?
Yes, yes, so the Committee would meet and go through the bill clause by clause. And if there are proposed amendments by way of deletion or, you know, embellishing the various clauses, taking out the dots, the t's, etc., we'd do that. But if it is the decision of the Committee, like some are urging it on us to reject the bill outright, then we wouldn't have to go through all that. But like I said, these are matters that would have to be determined by the Committee. Whether or not the bill passes the test would have to be determined by the Committee. I'm sure that would be one of the first major decisions we'd have to take before we settle down to look at the various clause-by-clause provisions of the bill.
Madam, for you, a direct question to you. Are you hopeful this bill would see the light of day, will be passed into law?
Well, as a Committee, I've told you that it's not proper for me to do that. We're an 80-member Committee. Everybody's vote counts. If there are disagreements, we would subject the matter to the vote and coming out with our recommendations. I don't think at this stage it would be proper for me to say preempt the outcome of the Committee's work. Inappropriate. So spare me that for now, Paka, we'll get to that. Our decision would be communicated. I mean, it will be taken in the full glare of the whole nation. That is why this, the meetings are telecast life for all to see.
And for me, I think earlier, there was a push for someone to be silent on the front of Parliament. I think it was the pastor who...
Professor Prempe.
Right, what happens to that? I mean, is there something the Committee will consider?
Well, I think that the Chairman gave a ruling, and so we made progress. I do not think that this is a matter that would want to... In any case, we don't have the power to side for contempt. If the procedure is that if anybody is minded to press contempt charges, you would have to appear at the plenary and raise the issue for the speaker to make a referral to the Privileges Committee. So this is not the forum to determine those matters. But like I said, the Chairman did give a ruling, and I thought that largely resolved the matter that was raised in relation to what Professor Prempe had said.
James Sagaga is on Parliament for Bush on the Constituitions. Yeah, Honorable, thank you very much. Professor Godfrey Bupinto is here. We are told that he would be making his argument before the Committee. And MFA, as I mentioned earlier, it's been quite an interesting day here at the Committee's sitting. The Committee has taken just about 40-minute break, going to have lunch and return to consider other memos before it. Prof, quickly, what are your expectations? You are here to meet the Committee. What are your expectations, quickly?
I think that there's an issue that we believe that we should look at it from different perspectives. And the perspective I am here to share is from the economic perspective, that as a country, this is not LGBTQ agenda. It's not something we should consider now.
Shouldn't you consider the LGBT agenda now?
It's an expensive lifestyle the state cannot afford, even the individuals can't afford. And if you look at other countries where they have gone ahead with this, where they've realized that individuals cannot afford, the state must absorb the cost. We don't have the fiscal space. And there's no country that ever developed with this agenda. At the development stage, this is anti-growth. So the reality on the ground is that it should not be something that we say is a priority now because even from the law of faith, it's not a fundamental human right. It's a lifestyle. And we can't afford to promote that at this stage of our development because it's expensive, it's destructive. The workplace requirement to accommodate the community and the requirement and the burden on the state for this will collapse our health sector. So we don't have the fiscal space. We are incapable in any form of faith, psychologically and the rest of them, to be able to add this to our menu precisely. And not promoting it, it's not like you are denying somebody any fundamental right. If it's fundamental, it must be traceable to everybody. But this is not. This is not. This is an expensive lifestyle others want to impose on us. Okay, it's a cultural invasion, values of our society. Look, there's a role, culture, societal values play in economic development. You must understand your contest. And look at what is it that you want to promote. It's as simple as that. It's expensive, it's destructive. Look, LGBTQ in its conclusion is lawlessness. And no country has ever developed with lawlessness.
So if I get you, allowing the practice of homosexual activities in Ghana obviously would be kind of a nemesis on economic development. Is that what it is?
It's expensive. We are not ready. We are not ready. It's not something we should tolerate now.
Now, even before you do your presentation, not quickly for me, before you do your presentation, what do you make of the general presentation by the earlier speakers who have advanced their argument for and against the bill?
Well, I think that in addition to this and what I've observed broadly, there is a certain general trend that culturally, our values are inconsistent with this. And that it's not the way to go. Also based on some kind of survey by some NGOs and all of that. But I think the bit where people have concerns starts to do with the fact that if you are talking about it, the advocacy and the rest of them, there are levels. We teach sex education, but we oppose comprehensive sexuality education. There's a difference. If you are merely disseminating knowledge about something, it's different from when the intention is to promote and elicit response in a certain way. So we can look at, we can look at that and see how we can find you that in a way that does not undo the general will, that this is not the way to go.
I see. Now, follow for me, before you go. I get it, understand it. And correct me if I am wrong. I mean, listening to the earlier speakers make the argument about morality. I don't know what the focus, what your argument should be anchored on. Would it be about the legal implications and the economic implications as far as she was concerned?
I think I'm looking at it more from my profession, more from the economic perspective. And the fact that at this stage of our development, it's not something we can afford to load onto our menu as a country. And there's enough empirical evidence to suggest that that it's not the way to go. The morals and all of that, you know, what we call society and what shifts behavior and all of that, you can't isolate morality and what people consider to be moral from all of this. So if you look at our upbringing, if you look at our educational curriculum, we teach religious and moral education. As a society, there are some things we think that is not good. Okay, so teaching it is also to correct it and not to promote it. So broadly, in terms of even our educational prescription, there are some things that we think is immoral, and we don't want to encourage that. We teach that. You can't take that away from the human being and all of that. You can't also take faith away from this discussion, okay? Because we are deeply religious.
That's what they are saying, that they are accusing you of imposing your religious beliefs on the ordinary Ghanaian, which is against the Constitution.
Please, please. What we call fundamental human right and what is allowed and what is not allowed is contest. It's contest. You can try that in Saudi Arabia. You can try that elsewhere. Try that in China. Try that in Russia and all of that. So what Europe broadly considers to be acceptable, some of them may not be acceptable to us. What we broadly consider to be acceptable, some of them may not be acceptable to them. So there's contest. We are a sovereign nation. So we know what defines us, what is common amongst us and all of that. And without even actively teaching anyone or engineering behavioral change, people tolerate other religions, people tolerate people of different political orientations and all of that. But check the data about the tolerance, the perception about this and all of that. So I think that if broadly, broadly, and you can't take the religion away from that, you can't take the moral aspect away from it. You can't take the economic aspect, the scientific, and all of that. You are looking at all these things and in what direction do all these things point to? You point to the fact that this is not the way to go.
Professor Bupinto, thank you very much. I know the budget is coming very soon, and Prof will be discussing the budget soon with you now. We'll do that. So, MFA, you heard Professor Godfrey Bupinto making the argument that, in fact, in a very simple term, Ghana is not ready for this kind of lifestyle. It is a lifestyle, it's not a human right. And so the country is not ready for this lifestyle. He believes that where we've gotten towards as a nation, obviously, we need to send the idea of encouraging such a practice in the country. And so these are some of the positions taken by those who have submitted their memos to the Committee in favor of the bill currently before the Committee and those against the bill. Professor Tichomenu, lawyer Akutwampa, H. Kusiprempe have all advanced the argument against the bill, insisting that if the bill in its current form is passing to law would violate the fundamental human rights. That has been challenged by quite a number of the proponents of the bill and of course, those who have also supported the bill. And earlier, as I mentioned, the Church of Pentecost presented about seven different memos, in fact, from the various wings of the Church. So right from the main ministry, the women's ministry, the youth ministry, and even the children's ministry. Well, that has been questioned by Professor Tichomenu that, I mean, did the children put together the memo? Or it was written for them by the parent or even the Church leaders? Well, we'll continue to monitor activities here and bring to our viewers the latest update. But of course, they should be assured that whatever transpired here with the Committee members and the Chairman and the ranking of the Committee will bring them all the updates. So, MFA, I hand it over to you in the studio. If you have any, if you don't have any further question to ask, I'll hand you over to the studio. And when the Committee return, which I'm told in just about 10 minutes, we will bring them the live update from the DF Anan Hall here at Parliament.
Just before I let you off, Paka, though, if you can hear me, I saw that the proponents of the bill, for instance, some of the MPs that actually put together this bill, sat through proceedings as well, taking notes. And I saw some George amongst others at the Committee hearing. Knowing you, I'm sure you may have interacted with them briefly. What have they been saying? They've been sharing their thoughts with you on what they've heard so far?
Well, so, MFA, the first question I asked was that I was expecting them to be the first to have made the argument or to raise the curtain for today's event. Unfortunately, that did not happen. The response was that the Committee did not officially invite them. But however, because they are members of Parliament, they decided to sit through or they sat through the proceedings for the day. So they are waiting for the official communication from the Committee, and which we understand today, they will get the invitation. And tomorrow, they may present or make their argument. But however, they've listened to the argument from both sides. And to some of them, it's quite interesting. And in fact, one of them that I spoke to said, it's laughable. The argument has been very emotional, and they don't want to focus on emotional argument. They are sticking to facts and the things about Ghanaian values and the culture that must be protected as a society. So they will let their real argument or the cast of their argument made known to us tomorrow when they appear before the Committee. So they are not shaken. They are confident that they have a very well-written, crafted bill. And they believe that at the end of the day, members of Parliament, together with a lot of Ghanaians who are in support of this bill, MPs would see to the passage of the bill into law. There is no ambiguity about that. This has been their view when I spoke to them earlier.
Paka, I'll allow you to also grab lunch quickly. And then when the Committee resumes sitting, we'll come back to you here on the Pulse. That's my colleague, Kusipaka Wilson, parliamentary correspondent, sitting through that Committee. That's the Constitutional, Legal, and Parliamentary Affairs Committee of Parliament. They started the public hearing today. We're told that they're expecting about 140. They've received over 100 memoranda on this for and against the Proper Human Sexual and Family Values Bill. We call it the LGBTQ plus bill. It was referred to them, that Committee, by the Speaker, even though there were concerns raised about the processes that the Speaker went through in terms of referring that particular bill to the Committee. That notwithstanding, the Committee has just started the public hearings today. And already, we've been hearing from lawyer Akutwampa. We've heard from H. Kusiprempe. We've heard from the Pentecost Church. And we are expecting Professor Godfrey Bupinto, amongst others, to also present their proposals for and against that particular bill. But let's see a few excerpts, just in case you missed the submissions earlier.
I wish on behalf of our group to express our appreciation of the invitation to present a summary of the key views that we expressed in the memorandum that we submitted to Parliament. We do believe that this is an important part of the lawmaking process, and further that the issues have not been determined in advance. And that is why we are here to speak to the, to the bill, in the hope that significant changes may be made, or if need be, that the whole bill be rejected. Mr. Chair, I will make my submission in the following structure. One, the constitutional issues implicated by the bill and its provisions. Two, the unfounded premises of and justification for the bill. Three, the absurdity of provisions of the bill and a lack of understanding of the issues that the bill purports to speak to. And finally, my conclusion. Mr. Chair, it is our duty that the bill violates Article One plus one and two of the Constitution, the very first article of the Constitution, which upholds the sovereignty of the people of Ghana, in whose name, quote, in whose name and for whose welfare, the powers of government are to be exercised in the manner and within the limits laid down in the Constitution. So the powers of government, including legislative powers, are to be exercised only in the manner laid down in the Constitution and within the limits laid down in the Constitution, irrespective of the number of people that may support the piece of legislation. The legislation must meet that first provision, fundamental provision of the Constitution. If it doesn't, by clause two of Article One, that bill or that legislation is void, is void, it means it doesn't even exist anymore. Now, the combined effect of these two clauses is that the select committee and Parliament as a whole has a duty it cannot shake to ensure that any bill that comes before it, the first thing that it must tend to is whether it has been introduced in Parliament in the manner laid down by the Constitution. And if it crosses that hurdle, Parliament and the select committee must interrogate and determine whether the bill and its provisions are within the limits again laid down in the Constitution. So if the bill is introduced in a manner that is not laid down in the Constitution, that should be the end of the day, should be rejected. This is the force of the Constitution. Again, even if it is introduced in a manner laid down in the Constitution, but it is not, the provisions are not within the limits laid down in the Constitution, it is to that extent forced. Our respectful submission here is that the bill has been introduced in Parliament, not in the manner laid down in the Constitution. This is because this is a private member's bill, and under Article One oh eight of the Constitution, two and three, it is the president or his agent who can introduce bills generally in Parliament.
So that was the argument put forward by Lawyer Akutwampa. He was not alone on this. We also heard H. Chris Prempe, amongst others, make a similar argument against the bill. Also, the Church of Pentecost were represented, their legal team, as well as the Pentecost Church itself, and we are told that five various departments of the Church made a submission on that. We can hear them.
I can declare that no weapon fashioned against us shall prevail. Mr. Akutwampa was making allusion to the presence of which is with us.
Please, please, we don't want any direct confrontation.
Yes.
So kindly restrict yourself to your presentation. I'll be so grateful if you do that. Thank you, Apostle.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm here to introduce the one who is going to make our presentation, and he's in the person of Apostle.
All in twenty minutes?
Of Fori Krago.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Honorable members, I made a mistake of not prompting the first... Honorable members, I made a mistake at the beginning, I did not disclose that it was twenty-minute presentation. In order to cover the rest of the presentation, we are limiting ourselves to twenty minutes per presentation. We use our discretion if the person had not finished and he wants some more time. So please exercise patience. Thank you. So we'll tell you from now.
Right, so Apostle Fori Krago will do our presentation on our behalf.
The Ghana Pentecost and Carismati Council, the GPCC, is very much aware of the fact that Parliament, as the representative of the people, is at all material times expected to mirror the broad opinions of its constituents, and where appropriate, serve as a vehicle to satisfy the interests of the people whose mandate they represent, especially through the vehicle of legislation. The promotion of the Proper Human Sexual Rights and Ghanaian Family Values Bill 2021 is seen as very critical to the work of this aid parliament of the fourth republic. We are definitely that the passing of this bill into law, which we expect will come on, will give eloquent expression to the sovereign will of majority of the people whom Parliament represents. We also see it as a very bold attempt to win this dear nation of ours from the dangerous notion that anything foreign isn't good for us. This nation has been inundated with all forms of foreign values, and we see this bill as a very bold attempt to deassociate Ghana from such a menace. Because we see the bill as trying to customize our distinct values as a people by creating a situation that will preserve the sanctity of our time-ordered values as a nation, which is free from foreign corruption and spy position. We also see that the bill also seek to protect the pristine Ghanaian norms and value systems and prevent the use of modern technology, as the case might be, to mend the waters. We see that the bill is a proactive step to give impetus to certain aspects of our criminal jurisprudence and deny it the technological oxygen to thwart the flames of a possible wildfire that might obtrate the foundations of our cherished norms and values, which makes us Ghanaians. We will try, for purpose of time, to, as it were, consolidate our attention into about three main points. And the first issue is the fact that we see that the bill is a bold attempt to consolidate the constitutional and legislative framework of this dear nation. The Criminal Affairs Act of 1962, Act 29, has done very well, it has served this nation so well over the past, I mean, number of years. Under that act, we see that unnatural canal knowledge, we see section one oh four, we criminalize this unnatural canal knowledge, which is defined as casual intercourse with a person in an unnatural manner. This issue address the peculiar challenges which face society in those days. But we should understand that it's a different generation with a different cup of tea, things have changed so much. And because of that, naturally, they have come setting lacuna in Act 29, which I believe, or we believe that this bill can very well embrace. Honorable Chair, you realize that this LGBTQI is more or less like an hamper with assorted items in it. It is subject to fast mutations of what is deemed as unnatural canal knowledge, and I believe this has spawned this fraternity. Honorable Chair, you realize that this LGBTQI is very expansive and spialastic. You wake up the next day and one alphabet has been added, and you are left wondering which other alphabet. I don't know, probably N as Z, and we need to consult and create more. But you realize that spialastic limits, and we have been faced with the introduction of new species of unnaturalness in our relationship with it passing day. And the bill is seen as an attempt to pursue itself, to deal with these unpredictable mutations over the long haul.
So that was the argument by the Church of Pentecost also, when they appeared before the committee earlier today. So the committee currently is on a brief recess to resume, to hear more, we are told. Professor Godfrey Bupin is next in line. He's a renowned economist, and we've heard him interact with my colleague, Quisipaka Wilson, on the arguments that he's going to be making. He says he's going to make an economic argument against the passage or for the passage of a Proper Human Sexual Rights and Family Values Bill. We'll take a quick break here on the polls. When we return, we'll touch on some other stories.